Okay, we are ready. It is seven oh four and I'd like to call to order this regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. We have a full crowd tonight, so I'm going to proceed with opening public comment. I'm just going to ask, since we have a lot of people that I feel like might want to say something, that we be as brief as we can and as thorough as we can. So I'll open the floor to public comment. Please share your name and your address.
Hello, Pam Young, Ashland Road, Holly Geeky, twenty seven Great Hill Drive.
Good evening to everyone in the school board and everyone here. My name's Pam Young. This is Holly Geeky. Right now, I'm the current vice president and former president of the New Market Support Staff Association. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our membership regarding concerns with culture and climate that have evolved with our New Market Support Staff and the current administration at the SAU level. However, before getting to the key points of the culture and climate in New Market, I do think it's important to explain to you what support staff members' job responsibilities are, as some of you may not be aware. First and foremost, support staff are educators of the students. There are varying levels of support staff roles ranging from a special ed para who might work as a one-to-one or with several students at a time. This job can consist of assisting students with accessing curriculum to behavior management and toileting, just to make a few, just to name a few, and could be taking place in several different classrooms. A kindergarten regular ed para will work with all students in a classroom and upwards of twenty at a time and are relied on heavily by the classroom teacher. Tutors work with students in multiple grade levels in math or reading, typically in a small group setting. All levels of support staff are often called upon to substitute if a classroom teacher is in a meeting or out for the day, at times with very little notice. Support staff are an integral part of a child's life and in and out of the classroom. If any child is in need of additional support during the school day, support staff is there to help them navigate through the challenges they may face. All in all, the support staff are the heart and soul of the schools. They are for the students, teachers, administration, and so much more. The leadership of this unit has been unable to secure a meeting with the full board to address the concerns of climate and culture, among other issues that this unit has raised since May. Based on our most recent survey results, this presentation represents the feelings and the will of the entire bargaining unit, not just those who have chosen to be association members. The numbers overwhelmingly show that the support staff do not feel supported or respected. The most concerning is the number of support staff who are contemplating not returning to the district. This number is staggering. It's over fifty percent. This in part is due to heightened levels of anxiety and overwhelming feeling of being undervalued, disrespected, and not seeing as important to the district. At a time when staff has already been under a great deal of stress related to COVID, feeling undervalued and unsupported by the SAU is not acceptable. This can no longer be ignored. We cannot risk losing the committed, experienced, and caring support professionals who work with this community's children. These children deserve the best teachers and the best support professionals to be successful. I'd like to read some comments to you that were received from the survey. We're choosing to keep these comments anonymous due to fear of retribution. One, to have my honesty and integrity constantly questioned by the SAU is completely disheartening. The lack of respect we see from the SAU is felt each and every day. I believe, number two, I believe the reason for our district, the reason our district was able to open school to targeted learners during the planned remote periods was because paras were willing and able to be in the building. I also believe that the upper-level administration did not recognize this effort. Three, while I'm not completely dissatisfied with my hourly wage, I do believe it is lower than most in the surrounding area. Four, would like to see us treated as professionals. For example, being offered paid training to the new math program as we will be supporting students and teachers with it. Five, I do not feel valued by the SAU. I do feel supported by the teachers and the building administrators. We deserve respect. I love my job and the kids I work with, but I don't know if I can stay because of how I am treated. Six, the past two years have left nothing but angst and regret of living and working in New Market. Seven, this school year was extremely stressful. The information trickled down to the support staff was usually after everything was already put in place. The support staff had lots of questions that couldn't be answered or were told we could get the information to you sometime. Sometimes it was weeks later or not at all. The survey results were clear. We have a climate and culture issue in New Market. In closing, we know that we can do better and we owe it to our children and community to do it better. This means reaffirming New Market's values and commitment to all staff. Thank you for your time tonight and for listening to the information this association had for you this evening. I hope that after reflection on the information, the board can arrive at an informed decision that will improve the climate and culture for all staff in the New Market School District. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Thomas Thomas. I live at sixty-one Packers Falls Road in New Market. I'm the father of two students in the school system, an incoming kindergartner, and a sophomore. Let me first start by thanking both Dr. Givens and the school board for taking on the extremely tough and often thankless job of running our school district. I do believe that often the New Market School District does not get the recognition that it deserves when compared to others in our area. To add to all of this, you've been performing this job throughout a pandemic and dealing with a challenging and quickly changing environment to keep our children safe. We know New Market has had a difficult time in attracting good candidates for superintendent and Dr. Givens certainly had the credentials and experience to lead us into the future. However, potential and reality do not always coincide. Even though the process to replace the superintendent is long and sometimes arduous, it doesn't mean we should settle for someone who does not meet the needs of our district and our town. The job of this school board is to provide direction and oversight for the superintendent. In the last three years, I've seen this board capitulate to Dr. Givens' wants and opinions rather than stand up for this town, with the exception of recent appointees that have asked the questions that should have been asked all along. The main voice that the residents of New Market have into the school district is through election of school board members and speaking out at these meetings. There's not been an incumbent board member reelected since Dr. Givens has been appointed. Additionally, public comments to this point generally have not been in support of the superintendent and ones that have may appear to be family or close members of board members. Countless ignored emails and phone calls voicing dissatisfaction with decisions made by Dr. Givens, coupled with the way she addresses this town and the non-verbal communication during these meetings, shows she does not care about us and does not care about public opinion. One clear example of the true character and disdain for this town is that students will be chastised for being dropped off in the front loop of the school, while on a regular basis, Dr. Givens' vehicle is blocking the fire lane instead of being twenty yards away in the parking lot. Communication from the superintendent's office is often rambling, confusing, and filled with errors in important information, while simultaneously failing to deliver the answers that we need. We have to deal with continuously rising taxes fueled by unnecessary emergency purchase allowances, which should have been restricted to time-sensitive, necessary purchases for COVID, but seem to be used to escape comment and criticism for decisions, as well as misuse of school personnel providing free labor to the town when assigned to the rec department during remote learning periods. There's an intense dissatisfaction within the staff as evidenced by the extreme attrition. Many people are afraid to speak up due to fear of retribution. And I applaud the support staff union for having the courage to stand up here and speak. None of this mentions the handling of Zoni incident. While I do trust the board and Dr. Givens had reason to take action, the situation could not have been handled any more poorly. I stood here during that emotional board meeting and asked Dr. Givens to try harder and do better moving forward. Unfortunately, communication and management have only gotten worse. I now ask the school board, the town in New Market, to not renew Dr. Givens' contract. We deserve a superintendent that listens to the people of the town, cares about the students and staff, communicates openly, and operates transparently. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Todd Kennethson. I live at five Wigan Drive. I just wanted to say that my experience with my two children has been remarkably different than that was just spoken of. I am very thankful that the options that were provided to my children last year and those children of the community. I personally don't know how you would have done it better. To provide in-school instruction and then to give people the option to be safe at home if that's where they thought they needed to be, and to provide instruction via remote and not leave those kids without instruction who are at home is commendable. I also, I work full-time and I speak with my coworkers throughout the state. And I can tell you, none of my coworkers had that. They had their kids at home all year until the spring, until the state mandated for them to go back. Or they had hybrid learning. And although I can see why some would have thought hybrid learning would have been great at the beginning, I'm glad that New Market didn't choose that because what I heard was they were in school two days a week and when they're home, guess what? No instruction at all. They weren't seeing a teacher on the computer. They were left to their own devices. So I commend New Market. I commend Susan, the school board, and the staff for making the decision to do the right thing for our kids. In addition to that, I'd like to commend Susan for the time that she spent outside of the school, going to school events. I've personally seen it myself. She sat at a swim meet with, watching my daughter and other daughters, other kids swim. And if anyone's ever been to a swim meet, they're not fun. They're not fun. They're hot, they're loud, and unless it's your kids swimming, you really don't care. So for Susan to sit there for three hours is commendable. And I know that's not one of the only events she attends. I understand that it's pretty regularly. And I commend you, Susan, for doing a great job and I appreciate you and I hope that you'll stay.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Dan Smith. I live at forty-one Lady Slipper Drive. Everybody on this board knows me, I think. I sat on the budget committee for six years prior to not running for reelection after this most recent one. I watched a lot of superintendents come and go in the time that I sat on the budget committee, from ones who were self-aggrandizing like the guy who tried to build the sixty million dollar school, can't even remember his name anymore, to ones that were incompetent fillers who kept the chair from flying away like Mike Martin, to ones that were empire builders like Meredith Nato. And in the six years I was on the budget committee, I never saw a superintendent more dedicated to the school district, to the staff, and to the students in this district than Dr. Givens. That's not saying there aren't better people in the world. That's not for me to say. But that's saying that we've not had that experience from any other superintendent in the time that I've been involved in town government, or really before I was involved in town government for that matter. That's going to be really hard to replace if that's the path we decide to go down. I mean, for the first time in the time I've been involved in this district, we have a superintendent who's focused on curriculum, who's focused on building up from the inside, the staff, and who's actually attempting to run this school district like a school district, not like an extension of the personalities of the people in the town. A superintendent who is not coddling weak, underperforming employees in administrative roles. Sorry for anyone that offends, but that's the reality of what I saw. When I joined the budget committee, the third year after, you know, we didn't get information from the building administration at all. That all came from the superintendent and the business administrator at that time. We actually have building administration now who's capable of running a school. That wasn't the case before. So, you know, I understand a lot of people's feelings were hurt by the way the departure of the last principal went, but moves need to be made when you have a situation like that, where schedules aren't going out on time, where, you know, you just can't trust what you're being told. So, you know, a lot of people are going to disagree and that's fine. This is my opinion, but it's backed by what I observed, like I said, in six years of sitting, where you're sitting during budget committee meetings and just observing the way the district run. Dr. Givens pulled us out of a deep, deep hole that was left behind with the departure of not only her predecessor but also the previous business administrator. We wouldn't be where we are today without her. We certainly would not, in my judgment, have been able to come through the pandemic the way we did without her leadership. So as we think about what the options are going forward, let's live in reality.
Hi, my name's Jessica Hinchcliffe, five Neil Mill Road. I just want to thank the board for their service. I did write a letter last month in regards to the renewal of Dr. Givens' contract. And I know that you stopped reading letters aloud, so I just want to make that, remind you that I wrote that letter. I'm just speaking tonight because my letter was just about the unrest that's been in our town in the tenure that Dr. Givens has been here. I've spoken a number of times at school board meetings in the last several years and it's something that I've never done in my life. And I've done it because I felt like I needed to for my children and for the good of our students in New Market. It's recently been brought to my attention because my letter was about, you know, involving stakeholders and just getting feedback. If there is this unrest, give people the opportunity to share their feelings. Give people the opportunity to express how they're feeling. Before we renew a contract for several years, I cannot speak to your character. I can speak to some things that you've done that have been very good for this town, but I can also speak to the fact that there has been a feeling of unrest and a feeling that it's not a good connection for New Market. And so I think it's time to give people an opportunity to give their feelings in an anonymous, safe format. It was brought to my attention that a survey was conducted by the teachers' union and that the board has decided not to share those results. And that is very unsettling to me, that that's what we've been asking for and if those results are out there, then those results need to be shared. And it's something that feels dirty. It feels secretive and that's what I think people need to understand is that there needs to be complete transparency right now. If we are to have complete trust in you, if we are to move forward as a town with the things that have happened in the last several years, then we need to have this transparency. We need to have the opportunity to share how we feel and we need those results to be shared. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no movement, I'm going to close public comment. Oh, mic's coming.
Mike Kessin, five Wigan Drive. It's good to see the board on the old seats and I want to thank everybody for being here. I was on the other side of some of these built rooms. We might be exceeding the forty-sixth capacity of this room anyways. But very briefly, I just, I'm going to lend a little different perspective. As I said, I was on the board for six years. I served on two committees, two superintendent search committees, and have a pretty good idea of what the field is out there and what the field is not, okay? And I've also worked with several superintendents. I haven't worked with one better, even close, than Superintendent Givens by far on every respect. When Dr. Givens joined us, she joined us at a time where, you know, we were missing some key staff members. We didn't have a business administrator. We didn't have a lot of processes in place. There wasn't an assistant superintendent. There were deep curriculum needs that hadn't been addressed for years, I would argue, because of our turnover of superintendents. We've been through eight superintendents in this town over the past fifteen years. And don't take solace in the fact that the average, you know, tenure of a superintendent in New Hampshire is three years. That's not in a good performing district. That's not something we should aspire to. You shouldn't keep a bad superintendent just for continuity either, but you got a good one. And I would lock her in her office and don't let her out, okay? And she's not perfect. Susan and I had our battles. You better believe it. But they were battles among teammates, battles because we thought, you know, we had differences of what was in the best interest of students. But we always got back in the huddle and did what, you know, we were supposed to do and we kept it civil. So I think that's important for folks to know. In terms of a process the board might want to consider, you set goals as a board. You did it every year. You've done it every year since Superintendent Givens has joined you. You did it collaboratively, okay? In part because that's part of a contract, but also it makes good sense. You want to work as a team and you did evaluations every year. You shouldn't be approaching this renewal issue based on any different criteria. It doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense. I would argue that it's not good faith and fear dealing to do anything but that. It's just, it's just common sense and fairness. You've already, already been through it. Just briefly, Susan, as I've seen, I, I, I'm gonna miss things here, so I apologize in, in terms of her performance. When she came on board, she assessed the key issues. One of the key issues was getting that assistant superintendent. She persuaded folks, the board, and the, um, the Budget Committee to support that. That went through. What happened as a result of that, a year later, because Susan allowed that superintendent to do her work, her good work, we have a math curriculum now that's going to roll out this year. Doesn't happen by accident. Don't take that for granted. Also, um, for the past two years, the budget process has been miraculous. The first year she did it on her own because she, essentially, because she didn't have anybody else here to do it. We've got a great business administrator. We've got a good administrative team. This past budget passed unanimously with, with great support. I haven't seen any money being wasted at all, just the opposite. I've seen, I've seen frugality. And, and that, trust me, that Budget Committee had, had, had a microscope on that budget, as they should. And they looked it over, and they, they all approved it unanimously, as, as had this board. This board approved all of these expenses unanimously. The pandemic, that's perhaps indicative of, of Susan's leadership overall. She brought together eighty people, parents, teachers, students, administration. Early on in May of that year, when the pandemic struck, she had the foresight to bring all those stakeholders together, acquire stuff. People forget, you couldn't get Plexiglas, you couldn't get hand sanitizer. She, in her leader, in her team, were able to get all that stuff. That didn't happen by accident. It's easy to, you know, when things go right, it's easy to sort of, you know, forget all the work that goes into that. Susan was here nights and weekends, along with her team, to see those things through. Routinely, during the pandemic, we were short-staffed. You know, some days we'd have to close down the, the in-person learning because you just didn't have the people there. Routinely, Susan and her staff from the SAU office were covering lunches and doing this and doing that. They taped this thing together and made it the best experience, I think, you could have done under the circumstances. Is she invested? You bet, you bet yes she is. You know, during that graduation ceremony, my, my daughter was part of, and I'm soon sending off to college, I got up the next day with my twelve-year-old, just turned twelve, we went to the vaccine clinic. Susan was there running that thing. Later that day, she caught both the, the softball game and the championship baseball game. That was routine. She went to more than one swim meet, by the way, which is hell on earth, you know? I know, and from personal experience. She, she went to poetry out loud, she did all these other things. So, you know, she, she's, she's invested in this district. How could you not be, given what she's gone through over these past few years? You'd have to be nuts. She's about the mission, okay? And don't lose her. You should listen to everybody here tonight, and I respect everybody here tonight. I served six years, I put my heart and soul into this thing, and I gave up a lot, I took a lot of crap, you know, over the past couple of years, okay? And I, but, but I, I believed in the mission, and Susan believes in the mission, and she's not perfect, and she, and she'll be the first to admit it. But be, concentrate on your goals that you set, how those were achieved, be careful about rumor, be careful about speculation, innuendo, and be careful about passion. You were elected. You answer first to the students. Your fiduciary is on behalf of the students. The voters elected you, but you're in that unique position that you first have to look out for what's in the best long-term interest of the students. Not worrying about which way the wind might blow, about reactions when you take any decision. You should listen to everybody intently, as you do, and you has, as you have all along, but ultimately, you need to make decisions based on the best long-term interest of the students. Final point, and thank you, Chair, for indulging me, because I'm sure I'm beyond three minutes. Plan B, folks, what's your plan B? Susan should be renewed based on the merits of her performance alone, full stop. But think about it. So folks who might want to send her on her way, or really other, any other superintendent, we've been through eight in a year. I've seen the field. It wasn't great. We were lucky to get two or three good candidates out of a field of many superintendents when we went through both of those hiring processes. It was, it was disappointing. I don't know all the reasons, but I'll tell you what, in the last six months, I have reached out to the New Hampshire School Board Association. Newmarket has a bad reputation as far as that goes. Superintendents know this. They see those, they see those old, um, meetings, they see what's going on, they, they know how many people have turned over here, they know what they're gonna run into. So this is not a place where people are stumbling over themselves to come to. Do I think it's a place with great potential? You bet ya. But we need to get over this. We need continuity. The last thing I'll talk about, two seconds, is continuity. When you, and I know this from experience, when you lose a superintendent or, um, you, you have the turnover, you can't get any traction. That's why we're here today talking about accreditation, and talking about a lack of curriculum. How do you get staff, administration to buy in when every two years, you know, you got somebody new with brand-new ideas? You know, you just don't get the buy-in. So thank you, thank you for your indulgence, and thank you for your service.
What can I say after a lawyer? Alzank, twenty-two Smith Garrison Road. There was a couple of points that I wanted to make. Mike has made them all, but I want to emphasize a couple. I was on the school board for five years. I served with Elizabeth and Kim. And these kinds of decisions that, or these kinds of issues that are being addressed tonight are not taken lightly by any board member, I can assure you of that, particularly Elizabeth and Kim. They have a bunch of other considerations other than single actions, single decisions to consider. Mike went over most of them. But I gotta tell you, folks, I, I, unfortunately, I don't know you other folks at all, but I have absolutely one hundred percent confidence in Kim as the Chair and Elizabeth, that all these matters were discussed. What do we do if this happens? What do we do if that happens? How much do we pay her? How much do, all those considerations. What did she do on her objectives last year? Her objectives, I assume they're public? Yes?
Yeah.
Sure. And we spent a lot of time on annual objectives. Uh, I don't know how many there were, let's say there were ten, let's say she accomplished eight great, two not so great. That's a big part of the decision. It's, it's, it's multifaceted. And again, I, I, having sat where you folks have, I know how hard it is, but I also know we do our best for the community. That's the bottom line, is that what everybody likes? Nope. Can you find people that disagree and agree? Yes. But, um, for the third and final time, I have absolute confidence in this board that they made the right decision for the community. Thank you.
Seeing no movement. At seven thirty-five, I'm gonna close public comments, and we'll move on with the agenda. The first thing is a discussion item. Susan, um, you had in the packet, uh, school opening update. If you would like to review that, that would be great.
Sure. So back on, on June the twenty-second, uh, we presented a recommendation for school opening plan, and the board approved that, and had asked at that time that I come back and provide an update in case circumstances change. At the time, of course, we didn't have CDC guidelines. We didn't know if New Hampshire was gonna provide us with any, um, and we had to get that plan, um, to the state by the twenty-third. So, uh, as you all know, CDC did, um, prepare some guidance and, um, publish that, uh, and then they made an update to that. And, uh, initially, uh, their guidance was, um, provided on July the, the ninth, and they were recommending, um, uh, that masks indoors at that time for vaccinated people be, um, wasn't necessary, and that for unvaccinated was. And then subsequently, because of what's happening with the uptick in virus transmission, they changed, uh, their guidance again, and they're currently saying that, um, masks, uh, should be worn universally indoors for teachers, staff, students, and visitors. So when we published our, uh, plan, we said that we would look at CDC, we would look then locally in the state of New Hampshire to see what guidance was there, and then we'd look and see what was going on here in Newmarket. So, um, our plan adheres to all of the requirements of CDC and New Hampshire, the only exception being the masking piece. So the Commissioner, the Governor, um, and the Department of Health and Human Services said they are not going to be providing any more, any official guidance, that we are to follow the universal precautions, um, and apply them in whatever way makes sense for us here locally, based on what's going on locally. So the guidance that they had provided, that I had shared with you, um, on the twenty-second, still remains. Then looked at, um, what's going on here in Newmarket when I had written this a couple of days ago. Uh, there was no cases in Newmarket, and fifty-five percent of our population is vaccinated now, with another, uh, four percent with at least one shot.
Fifty-five percent?
Fifty-five percent are fully vaccinated in our community, and four percent have at least one shot. So, uh, based on that, um, didn't see any reason to alter our recommendation for masking at this time. We will continue to keep an eye on it, and if something changes, and it seems that there's, you know, uh, you know, some kind of an urgent, uh, uptick in the numbers that's alarming, that, you know, we'd reconsider it, and certainly I keep an eye on, on that, and we'd come back to the board if, if at some point there's a reason to, uh, modify our, uh, plan. But at this point, um, when I was looking at the numbers today, there's six, uh, another report said that there was one to four. Sometimes there's, um, uh, you know, inconsistencies in some of the numbers coming out from the state, but either way, um, when we opened school last year, uh, we had, we had single-digit numbers as well. When we, uh, when I talked to Steve Fornier, uh, and the emergency management team back a couple of, uh, you know, months ago when we were discussing the plan, he said that we should anticipate having at least single-digit numbers until the pandemic, um, is over with, but that they had made the decision, as you know, locally, to drop the mask ordinance. So, um, at this time, it, you know, we're keeping an eye on it, and if it seems to trend in a, in alarming direction, then, you know, we'll, we'll take this up again. But at this time, there is no recommendation to change our plan with regard to mask, uh, masking.
I appreciate that you're keeping your eye on it, because it seems to be an ever-evolving situation.
Yeah. So there's, but there are a couple of little adjustments to make, uh, that we'd like to recommend, and, uh, one of them is on pages five and seven of our plan. Uh, when we talked about, you know, how we were gonna approach, um, feeding students' meals, our, our current plan says that we would do that in the cafeteria, and that is our plan for lunch. But there's also, um, a waiver being asked for, for Link Together to use our cafeteria. And with them using the cafeteria in the morning, if the board approves that, then we're not going to be able to serve breakfast there. So, um, what we would do is, is, uh, serve breakfast, uh, in the lunch.
And Link Together is gonna allow some before and after-school care, if we provide the waiver?
Yes, yes. This is to allow them to provide before and after-school care in our cafeteria.
Okay.
So that's what the waiver is, um, is to clarify that, that lunches will be served in the cafeteria, following all the protocols we already discussed, um, but that the morning meal, breakfast, would be served in the classrooms. So that's one change. Um, and then the other one is that when we wrote this, um, plan, we, we were aware that, um, the regulations around public transportation were expiring on September one, and we thought at the time, as we were looking at, um, how things were trending, that, um, they would probably modify their, uh, requirement to have masks on all public transportation. But given what's, uh, occurring right now and what CDC's recommendations are, we believe that it's highly unlikely that they're gonna change and, uh, allow people to have masks be optional on public transportation. So, um, the only other change would be just to, uh, write or modify the plan to say that masks would be required, um, on the buses until, you know, regulations change that allow us to make masks optional. It's not something that we can, we can't make masks optional.
Right.
It's, it's out of our hands.
It's a federal.
It's a federal, it's a federal, um, requirement. So, so, uh, we, we can't overwrite that. But should they change it, then, you know, we would go back to, if it's permissible to do so. But that, those would be the only two actual changes to the plan. The other thing, um, I wanted to mention was that, uh, in addition to a waiver for Link Together for before and after-school care using our cafeteria, um, we would also like a waiver for youth basketball to be able to use, um, the elementary school gym for practices. We, as you know, um, are anticipating, uh, that we'll be able to provide a full complement of athletic, uh, programming at the secondary level, but of course, um, the athletic programming at the elementary level is done through youth.
Right.
Um, you know, a youth organization that's outside of our. But we feel it's really important for the mental health of the students, um, to give them the opportunity to play basketball. Both groups would follow our protocols, um, and, uh, I've met with, uh, Mr. LaBranche and Mrs. Cooper, and, um, they both feel very comfortable, um, with those protocols. We'll continue to write them up and, and codify those, um, but we are, uh, supporting and seeking approval, uh, for a waiver for those two organizations for the upcoming year. So that is my report and, uh, recommendations.
Any questions, anyone?
I did a couple. Um, so on Link Together, my first notion was, well, maybe they could use the gym in the morning, but then thinking back to what Mike gave us, Link Together, they use tables a lot for coloring and that sort of thing, so I assumed the gym probably wouldn't really work for them.
Yeah, yeah. The, the cafeteria is the, the space where, where they, uh, they would prefer to be. Um, also, we have other programming, uh, our own programming that we want to be able to offer, so this allows them to have that space. We have a plan for how to keep it sanitized, kids will be co-horted, all of the same protocols we're following here. So, so, um, the other thing to make note of is that, um, kids will be coming in, um, as early as six-thirty, and, and students, uh, student arrival won't begin until eight-thirty, but staff report, um, far before then, and they need to be able to get in their areas. So by allowing Link Together to be in the cafeteria, then, um, it doesn't in any way, um, impede Japan what we're doing.
Makes sense.
Um, and, you know, for school purposes, so. For all those reasons and many conversations, uh, this is what everybody, the consensus is this is the best, uh, location for them.
And then the rec, I assume there's no games or anything, it's just local, Newmarket kids only?
And there's no games. They, they only want it for practice.
Okay.
He said that, um, he's, he's not anticipating having any home games. We did talk about it, and we, we said, well, you know, uh, you know, perhaps we could try to do something, but he said, no, he, he, that they're not interested in, in hosting anything here. It would just be for, uh, practices.
I did have one, is anyone else have any questions? I don't want to.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you so much for working with Link Together and the rec. I know it was not easy, there are a lot of people involved in this, and you and the rest of the SAU. Uh, I'm really excited as a parent, uh, and I don't want to, I know there's a lot of people that took advantage of Link Together with their kids in the past, and I don't want to speak for you. I think it would be very easy to say that. I, I really hope that Mrs. Cooper doesn't really know how difficult this was, uh, as anything more than that we're having in the pandemic, because I know as a parent, I'm so appreciative of everything she's done for my kids, and that she does a great service for the community. I'm just, I'm so happy that we're looking out, and the parents are very relieved as well, so thank you.
Yeah, and there'll be two programs. So one of the things that we did was a survey, um, not out of their database, but, you know, since we had access to all elementary school, uh, parents, and we sent out a survey, and we found that the need here in Newmarket was far greater than what anybody was able to provide. So I think our numbers were about a hundred and ten, um, students.
Nine in the morning and one thirty in the morning afternoon.
Yeah, yeah. And so, uh, Link Together's always had a long, um, waiting list to get in. So the rec department is gonna also be offering a before and after-school program, so we'll have two before and after, they're different flavors, you know, one is, uh, one's a different model. The rec department model would be, you know, club and rec department, but they will both be starting at, um, six, offer from six-thirty until eight-thirty, and then after-school up until six o'clock, so both. So both programs will offer the same times, which are the times that the parents said that they, they had a need. So we're able to make those accommodations. So thank you very much, Amy Jagande and her staff, and Ree Cooper and her staff, and my staff for working diligently to be able to provide these important services for our families and our kiddos.
Do we know how many families will be serviced?
I guess it just depends on how many are needed. I think both Ree and Amy thought that these numbers might not be as high when the registrations go out. So I'll send a flyer, the rec department sent a flyer out, I guess, last night.
Yeah, I saw that.
She said by morning, they had 16 sign-ups. We'll send out a flyer for, for Link Together and we'll send out the rec department to families so that they have both of them. And then they can just contact them and we'll, we'll see, we'll see. So it's early enough that I think, you know, the numbers, they'll probably, I'm hoping, fill, fill all their slots. That would be awesome.
And then I guess my last question is just to kind of help set expectations. And I know it's hard because it's such a fluid situation. But, and, and over the past two months, we've had, I think, two cases in Newmarket, which has been fantastic. But should we see a spike of 10 cases or 15 cases or whatever? You know, I assume we look at making masks mandatory in the elementary school or if we see an outbreak in the elementary school?
Those will be the conversations we have to have, absolutely. And, and some of it will be, you know, it's one thing, is there an outbreak? Is, that's associated with one of the care facilities where there's congregate living? Or is it an outbreak within the community? So.
Which I don't think we actually will be able to know that.
Well, I, there's ways for me to be able to at least learn about that. I can't share details. But, you know, if it's, if it's isolated to a specific place, then that wouldn't impact us in any way. Also, if vaccinations continue the way that they are and we hit herd immunity, I think that might play a fact, play a role in, in how we might want to approach it too. So I think there's a lot of moving parts and keep an eye on it. And if something is alarming, happens, then we'll, then we'll have to, we'll probably be having this conversation either way at the next board meeting, just to keep everybody updated on what things look like.
Okay.
As we approach them.
Am I right to assume that both unions would be involved in that discussion as well?
What, if, if there's any change in the plan, there always is.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to our action items. The first one is the second reading of our policy. We spent an exhaustive amount of time at the last meeting on this section of policy. And we had three policies that we were going to look at again.
Yes.
This meeting. And so Susan, if you want to start with those three, we can take it from there.
Three or four?
Right.
Four somehow.
The agreement to the changes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, great idea.
Andrew has made a request and I'll defer to the board. He would like for us to proceed to the vote on the amendments to the opening plan and the waivers for the two programs. Okay. I seek a motion to approve the amendments to the opening plan for the 2021-22 school year and approve the waivers for Link Together to meet in our cafeteria as well as the Youth Basketball Association using those facilities.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hammacher and a second from Mr. Swanson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's approved unanimously. Thank you, Ree.
Thank you, Ree.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, so Susan, if you want to.
No, it was wonderful.
Look at those first three. There was a fourth one, Gary, but I think the fourth one was had a discussion and Susan can talk to that. So I'll just leave it, but we had three definitely we have to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first one is BCA.
BCA.
Yes, BCA, yes.
I put them at the top of the packet.
Oh, beautiful.
Okay, so that you didn't have to go through and dig them out.
Thank you.
And these three policies, there was, you know, a lot of conversation about them. And I had asked you if you wanted me to update these based on the dialogue that took place. And you said, no, just bring them back as they were.
Right.
Recommended by the policy subcommittee. So there's no new information here. It was a matter of folks wanted to have time to think about maybe how, how to modify some language that would address, you know, some of the words.
And I, and I don't know if you'd received any feedback from any board members. I have not received any with any specific language.
No, that's not me specifically.
So the first one is the school board members ethics policy. So it's policy BCA. So that was the, the first one that you wanted to have. Another dialogue.
There was a question about number five there. There's a concept of, it says, no surprise, not surprise other board members or district staff with non-agenda items or engage in personal attacks. There was a question about reframing that to a different thing, but I have not received any.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just wasn't comfortable with the not surprising other board members because it sounds like, it sounds like you can't bring, like, we're not creating a fluid dialogue. But you can't bring things up at, at meetings without risking surprising other board members. And I don't know how you even define what a surprise is or not.
Should, I'm wondering if we should say something in the vein of whenever possible, board members should make the chair or the superintendent know of any items that they might want to add to the agenda before that time so that there's not a shock. I don't know if that's.
Or even just say to discuss. Make, take note where many items you want to discuss.
Yes.
Instead of add to the agenda.
Prior to the meeting.
Yeah, prior to the meeting.
Prior to the meeting.
Yeah, just, just so that, the main goal on that is to make sure that people are prepared. And we can, you know, if you have a question, that Susan can provide whatever it is appropriately. So maybe that's what it is.
So when possible.
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I mean, obviously you may think of things during a meeting.
Right.
Which would be different.
You know, and I, and I think.
Know in advance.
I think when we talked about this before, it was a question of, you know, just behaving respectfully in terms of, you know, if I come up with some concept that's going to require extensive research, I need to understand that, one, it might not be possible to be done at this time because of 87 other things going on. Or, two, it needs to be deferred to another time. And so I think that's sort of what the goal is. So what do you guys think?
I'm fine with changing the language to that.
Okay.
Oh, forgive me, when you asked me earlier, my glasses were fogged up. I think we had, we had also talked about perhaps separating five, two different ones by saying not surprise other board members with non-agenda items. And then, and then a separate one, not engage in personal attacks.
Yes.
Yeah, so just separate the two. But change the language on number five to.
Yeah.
Yep.
To the language as Kim presented it.
Whatever. So, okay.
So that will be, five will be now five, six and six will go on to now fifteen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts about that?
That was the only thing that I had on BCA.
Okay. The next one is BEDB.
All right, so this was on agenda preparation and dissemination.
No, I just had to, it was pretty in-depth. So we were going to take some time to look through before that the dissemination was correct.
Yeah, I think there was a couple items. There was the 14, is this one of the 14-day versus seven-day? And then also we'd removed an item that basically allowed any member to add something to the agenda.
Prior, within the two-day window or the 14-day window.
Well, within.
The, the new language is in.
The seven, using, it's sure to be within seven days, but yeah. Or not be within seven days.
And we are black and white, Susan.
Well, the current policy reads 14 days.
Well, it said two different things, right? One location it said seven days and another location it said 14.
That was in another section of the, a different policy. And it was to make them consistent. Andrew, do you remember?
It was a situation of seven in one section, 14 in another section.
Right.
How it be consistent.
And so we had it at 14 to be consistent. That was the issue. Now I'm missing one of the policies.
So if I had an item that I wanted to bring, then I would just call you and work after Givens and discuss it. And then we, as a board, decide to put it on again? Or how would that look?
We, we sit and we meet and we prepare the agendas with all of the things, all the, all the businesses before us. There are certain things that have to be done in a certain time, space and sequence. And so oftentimes we have, Kim and I, we have a running list of what can be covered. Also, certain times, reports are available or information is available or deadlines are, you know, we have to get a budget to the budget committee. So we try to take all of those responsibilities and obligations that we have and we try to time those. So when a board member wants to add something to the agenda, then it's informing us so that we have time, in addition to all of the other things that we're doing, to find a, a good place to have it sit, get the information that, that will allow for you to have a meaningful discussion without having to remove things that need to be done that have already been queued up previously. So that's the idea.
And I don't think there has been anything since March that has not been put on the agenda. It may have been put on, maybe not the next agenda, maybe a couple of agendas later on. But there was a communication with the board member requesting it as to what the rationale for the delay was. Do we need to have someone come to present a specific topic? Do we need to prepare a report for that time? If, you know, if it's something, a reporting that's, it might take two weeks to produce a report sufficiently to present it.
And some, it doesn't mean it's going to be 14. Some, some communications come in and we can fit it in and we do. And that happened this, this particular agenda. There are items added and it wasn't 14 days. And anything that we can do, we try to, we try to do. But sometimes there's other things that are, are ahead of that.
So why don't you sleep with seven days? And if there's an issue, just say, oh, remember, hey, I can't get that, so the next agenda is called, or wait for a report. Do you mind if we push it back and follow?
I think the 14 days is related to the fact that we're doing, we meet every other week.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that, but we do.
So that's what that's related to. We're meeting every other week so that.
It'd be almost 30 days, well, 28 days.
Right, it could be, yeah.
But it never has been.
It never has.
Twenty-one.
You know, it hasn't been before.
If it was 10 days.
Yeah, but even, even if.
No, it's been 14 days. The inconsistency was not in this section.
Even, I don't, I don't recall ever a time of my six years on the board that a chair has said to an individual, your, your thing is, is 13 days and a half. We're not putting it on the agenda. You know? So I, I, I think that we need to have a guideline. But I, you know, there's definitely, something could come up, as Susan said yesterday, that would cause us to change the agenda. You know, we just want to make sure that people are prepared to do the full extent of the job they can do. And, you know, there's no desire to limit conversation or, or any motivation that way at all from, for me.
I mean, I've checked other towns and most, well, the ones I looked at anyways were seven or eight days. I mean, if, if no one else is concerned about it, then.
I think right now it's not a concern, but if later on, if you're concerned about it, we can sit down and discuss it. But I'd never seen an issue with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
So where's the other place and it's being changed to 14 days from seven?
It was another policy.
It was a recommendation from the attorney. I can't remember which one it was.
It was one where, it was a, it was a situation where the superintendent had to investigate something and respond.
Right.
I don't remember what policy it was or what it is, but that's where, that's the other place that it was. So are we good with keeping it as is now and revisiting it? Should be, should it be necessary in the future? Okay, the next one is.
The public participation at board meetings.
BEDH, so there's one in between.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, there was another section on this. I'm sorry, I should have caught that. We'd removed an item that basically said any member may add an item to the agenda. And now it says it may be suggested by any board member, staff member, student or resident. And then it says the inclusion of any item suggested by a student, staff member or resident shall be at the sole discretion of the superintendent. So I guess, who has a discretion on items board members request? Before, we specifically said that.
Well, that's addressed above where it says the board chair and superintendent shall be to put together the agenda. So I think that's already addressed.
Right.
So that gives the board chair the right to not add something to the agenda?
Well, and, and any particular one, we're, we're trying to get all of the things that need to be done. So it could be that it has to be pushed to the next agenda, which we've had to do.
Which would be 14 days because we meet every 14 days.
Well, we get the notice and then sometimes if it's going to be, yeah. I mean, in general, there's, if there's an urgent matter, we, we've addressed it. If it's, if it's, if there are other things that are more urgent that we have to get done, then we, you know, we try to juggle it around to make sure that we get everything addressed without having board meetings be 27 hours.
So then why don't we just leave in that the board member may add something to the agenda, but it has to be within, in the 14 days, obviously would apply to that.
I think somebody has to take control of what goes on the agenda. I mean, I, I don't want within 14 days to have 75 things that I want. You want another 10, Andrew wants 20.
Well, this policy hasn't been updated since when?
2019.
It was revised in 2019. So has it been an issue? I, I'm not aware of it being an issue since then.
Real quick, so you're talking about the fourth paragraph down, right? Certain items of business.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, there's the line that was kind of removed.
The way I'm reading it, the only thing that the superintendent discretion over is staff members, students and Newmarket residents. So my understanding is that they could still have a process that they want on the board member. But the superintendent might disagree with, they could go to a board member. They not staff members, but.
But then Susan was saying that, so that implies then that the chair has the right to add or not add something.
Well, that's, that's what this is about. There has to be a, a manner in which we can conduct our business and, and do it in a way that there's, our time commitments are met and our obligations are met. And sometimes people would like to have, I mean, I'd like to have conversations about all kinds of things. But there isn't always, you know, time to do so, so.
Well, again, I think every, every member of the board is.
It's really to help us facilitate our work. And I think this language, all of this was, again, reviewed by our attorney.
Well, to see whether it's legal or not. But that doesn't determine whether or not it's the best language.
With some suggestions for, for how to ensure that we're running our meetings in a way that enables us to get the work done without.
Well, this actually says it was, the seven was deleted, 14 was added. So it was 14 here always, seven here?
Wasn't it seven on BEDB? And then there was another one when we withdrew. And I have my, let me find my copies because I.
To tell me to accept all the changes on all the other policies, so I, I.
The only note I have for BEDB is the number of days. And that's the second paragraph.
Well, I brought it back.
And that's because on one, one policy, there was 14 and on one, there was seven. And that was what.
I mean, you, you were on this committee, so I defer to you.
Well, this is stuff from the meeting that we all sat down and went through. And the only note I have is that we had discussion about number of days.
Is that, what's, what's BEDB? No, this is BEDB. What's the other one?
BEDH.
Yeah, BEDH.
Which is the next one?
I, I guess my concern is that this may restrict a future member or a future board from adding something to the agenda when every member of the board is equal. There is someone in charge of running the meeting. But the previous language is every board member has the right to place items on the agenda. Which seem very clear, straightforward, no ambiguity about who makes the decisions. There can't be any misinterpretation in the future.
But it's only, the only person that the superintendent has control over is staff, staff members, students and residents, right?
True, but, but Susan was saying that, then it's implied that the chair would have the, to lack of a better word, the veto power over.
It isn't. That's in the policy on the board chair's responsibilities and responsibilities, I believe.
No, they don't have, they help set the agenda. They don't have the right to determine what is or is not based on this.
Well, setting it is determining what's on it.
We've, we've.
Yeah, I think it said.
At the last meeting.
Items of business not on the agenda may be discussed and act upon if a majority of the board agrees to consider them.
I, I just feel like we're restricting potentially future board members or future boards from adding things to the agenda. When it presumably hasn't been an issue since at least 2019 that I've heard.
And the only thing we're changing on this, Andrew, what was the language that you changed on?
Seven days to 14 days.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Other than that, the way this board is run or however long it's been.
These are the two areas that we change.
Well, no, that's not true or accurate, I should say, because.
No, we, we combine some. I, I mean.
Yeah, there's more that was deleted off of this.
Yeah.
When we took the first.
This policy is written in a different, differently.
Well, I mean, what are we trying to fix? Has there been an issue? Has there been an issue with-
It was ambiguous in the prior policy. It said one thing, and as I recall, it said one, made one statement in one paragraph, and in the next paragraph, it said something different. And one of the things that we were attempting to do in all aspects of each of these policies was to make sure that they were clear, so that there wasn't, somebody didn't read this particular part of this policy, and then two paragraphs later have something that appeared to be contradictory.
Well, if the chair creates the agenda, and a board member wants to add something to the agenda, I can't just type in my agenda item, I have to go to the board or the superintendent, to the chair or superintendent and say, I would like to add this onto the agenda item. Correct?
And, and the previous policy said that we had the right to add that, and the new policy implies that-
No, it didn't, there was two different, that policy previously, there was two different paragraphs that were, didn't say that, they were not consistent. And so we asked the attorney to give us some language so that they would take out any ambiguity, so that there'd be clarity around it. Because on, I, we could go back and look at it, but again, you told me to accept all the changes, so I don't have that before me tonight. I didn't realize we were-
I'll have it here if you want. I, I guess I'm just not seeing what part was.
So if I want to add something to the agenda, I notify Kim or Susan.
Yep.
And you two will add it to the agenda.
Yep.
Well, we'll discuss if we can fit it on this agenda, or-
If you can fit it in.
And if we can, we will.
I have the right to add it.
Right.
Right.
Doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna get it added to tonight's agenda, it may be fourteen days from now.
And I would probably communicate, I would definitely communicate with you to say, Heather, we have eighty-seven different things going on on this agenda, and we-
I think there has to be some sort of control.
But it doesn't say that you have the right to add it.
Funnel, funnel. What?
It, it's the part that said you have the right to add it has been removed.
Wait a minute. Items of regular business may be suggested by any board member, staff member, student, or new market resident. The inclusion of items suggested by staff members, students, or new market residents shall be at the sole discretion of the superintendent.
And then it says, the board chair shall follow the order of business set up on the agenda unless the order is altered by a majority vote of the members present. So if the majority of the members present wanted to alter the agenda by placing something on it, then the majority of the board could do so. And I think what we said in the ethics policy was that you would, if, if somebody wanted to do that, and, you know, that they'd let the board chair know that, you know, that they felt something was urgent, so that it could be brought to the attention of the full, full, full board, you can take your vote. If you want to add it to this agenda, then it's the will of the board.
I think, so when we were looking over this, we were trying to look a way to make this more concise and more specific about what the process is. Now, I went around with the other school board in the area as well, and I looked at, like, Oyster River. Oyster River, it says specifically, is entirely up to the superintendent and the, and school board chair, whereas this one did not say that. So the fact that it didn't say that makes me think that I, as a board member, have the ability to request an item to be added to the agenda in under fourteen days.
And that is the practice.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think we're adding ambiguity, but if that's what everybody feels it says, you know, we might argue.
I'd like to have some structure, have it funnel it.
Okay. Then it seems like the majority of the board is prepared to prepare with that verbiage as it stands. Okay. And those were the three that we had to discuss from before.
No, B-
No, one more.
One more, the H.
Public participation.
Oh, yeah.
How do I miss that?
B E D H. Public participation.
Right. And, and the question around this one, as I recall, was changing, it says, individual speakers to residents, just again, to be consistent, because it talked about residents being allowed to speak to board agenda items, as opposed to people that aren't new market residents, then being able to come in and offer their opinions about matters related to the town.
And the town does it that way as well. I think we should mirror the town.
Exactly.
I don't think there should be any difference.
So that was the idea, and the conversation we had was around, you know, whether unless residents should be able to speak to-
And in a situation like that, the board can choose to waive that policy for a specific, if, if someone comes up, the board can decide at that moment to allow that person to speak.
Okay.
They've always asked beforehand. We, anytime it's somebody from outside of town, they've always asked.
That's fine.
Mm-hmm. I know the town limits public comment to fifteen minutes total. I don't see a reason for us to do that right now.
Well, in our policy, we do.
Our policy has always stated that as well.
Is it always stated that?
We just, we never have.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing that we have to look at at that is, in terms of fulfilling the policy and doing it consistently.
Right.
We have not done it consistently, we have allowed more than three minutes, we have allowed more than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, okay.
So we have to look, if, if, if the decision is that we're going to enforce our policy moving forward, then that's what we would need to decide collectively to do or not to do, and then proceed accordingly.
And the way it's written now is that at the beginning of the meeting, if there's a big crowd like this, that the board would take the action at that time to say, you know, there's, we'll allow twenty-five minutes tonight instead of the fifteen.
Okay.
So we'd have to, we'd have to resent, because that's-
Or you could wait fifteen minutes and see there's more people who want to talk, and then, and then the board can say, I make a motion to extend public comments, you know, for another half an hour, or whatever it is, you know, you, so that's the way the policy is crafted, right?
So we'll have to talk about that, about the logistics and program, and following it consistently, so that we don't get in trouble in other areas.
Sure.
Any other ones? That should be about it, since those are the only ones. I seek a motion to approve the B section of policy with the changes, withdrawals, and revisions as listed.
I make a motion?
Well, we can't do that for, have we changed any of these? I just want to make sure that for the second reading, we haven't changed B C A, B B A.
B C A-
Was combining number five.
We'll accept the amendments that were discussed in this meeting.
Yeah.
You'd have to accept the amendments as-
Because that would be the first reading for that particular one.
Nope.
If we change the language?
You just-
It's a, it's a second reading.
I thought every time we had a change, it had to be a new reading. I misunderstood.
Yeah, I think we're fine. So we have a motion from Ms. McKenney to accept the changes, revisions, and withdrawals as listed, as well as the amendments made tonight. I need a second for that motion. We have a second for Mr. Hemmerker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. The next thing is the public, I seek a motion to approve the public and non-public meeting minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, here's-
Yes, so we'll need, we'll need you to do it.
I make a motion?
We have a motion from Ms. Durant, and we need a second.
I'll second.
A second for Mr. Hemmerker. Were there any amendments to those minutes?
No, I saw nothing.
Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Miss McKenney, I'm gonna ask that you, would you like to abstain from that vote?
Yes, I would.
All right. The next thing on the item is the release of a teacher contract. Susan, would you like to address that one?
Sure, we had a junior senior high school guidance counselor request to be released from her contract, that she would like to accept a position elsewhere, according to your policy, G C Q C.
Right.
The board does not wish to release anyone who, after July first, unless, you know, bring it forth to you, and you feel comfortable releasing them. So we advertise, we do have a couple of qualified candidates that have applied.
Great.
So what I would recommend is that you approve and accept this resignation if we're able to find a suitable replacement and release her from the contract.
I seek a motion to, to approve this request for release of teacher from her contract if a suitable or chase line is secured.
I have a question. So if you don't find a suitable candidate, does this mean, so she's in limbo this whole entire time? But she signed the contract.
Yeah. So we're anticipating she's going to return.
Okay.
When it's this late, it's really difficult to find anyone, because other people have to release employees to come to us. So if a superintendent-
She's signed a contract.
Yeah, she has a signed contract with us. There you go.
Guys, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion for Ms. McKenney. I need a second.
A second.
We have a second for Ms. Durant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Does it go to professional staff, Susan, if you could update some, update us on that?
So since our last meeting, we have several new members join our team, and/or we're in the process of having them sign their contracts, we've at least had them issued. So Sarah Hamel has been assigned to the full-time substitute position at the elementary schools. We're glad to have Sarah. Sarah was a fifth grade teacher last year when we had to add another teacher, so she will be joining us as a substitute for the upcoming year. We had combined a couple of positions, so the athletic director, who resigned, you know, in June, and then we had a new E L O position, and I had approached you to see if we could combine those for an interim position for one year. We advertised for that, I was thinking that, you know, we'd, we'd be more likely to get a candidate if there was benefits involved, and we were able to get a candidate who's moving into the area, relocating, her name is Jody Callinan, and so she will be filling the role of interim assistant to the principal, which includes those, those roles, N I S C and P E and health coordinator, so, and any other assignments for the upcoming year.
And that's for one year?
That's a one-year interim.
And then we can determine whether or not we feel-
Yeah, it, we can reevaluate.
Depending on what recruitment looks like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next is a replacement for Shishi Ran, our Mandarin teacher, so Li Ni will be joining us. She's been teaching at Saint Mary's School in Massachusetts for seven or eight years. She also is the principal to a Chinese school that she runs on the weekends, and we're thrilled to have her joining us. Another tough position to fill, so this close, we were really sweating it, we ran that ad multiple, multiple times, so we're really thrilled. Educational technology coach, Debbie Jenkowski is coming to us from Epping, she fulfills the similar role there in Epping, and so we're, we're thrilled to have her coming to us this year. And then a replacement for Devon Lockley, Donald Cornier will be joining us. I'm not sure when his start date is, because he is currently living in Texas and relocating up into the area, so I'm, I'm not sure when his start date is, but, and the contract's been issued, and, and he's really looking forward to coming back to the New England area where his roots are. So I think I covered all the highlights since our last meeting.
Thank you for that, Susan, and I seek a motion to confirm these appointments that have been hired, of professional staff members that have been hired since the last meeting.
Simone?
I'll second.
We have a motion for Mr. Swanton and a second for Ms. McKenney to approve these hires. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The next thing is very nice.
Yes, we have a member of the community who wished to remain anonymous, who's donating two backpacks with school supplies for elementary school students.
That's awesome.
So, you know, so it was wonderful when, when somebody thinks about our youth and those that, that may be experiencing financial challenges, especially right now, with many people having been unemployed for, for quite some time, so before you tonight is this generous donation, and we're hoping that the board feels similarly and will accept this donation.
It's great. I seek a motion to-
Do you mind sharing real quick how a member of the public could go into something like this? I was creepy on Facebook the other days, someone was creating a blog, how they would do this.
Yeah, they, they can send a note to Patty Banfield, my assistant, and then we bring it before the board, and the board, you know, accepts the donation, and then we let them know and send them a nice note.
Do I know that? Bring them forward.
Awesome, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we, we, I seek a motion to gratefully accept this generous donation from this community member. It's, it's always neat when New Market helps our own, and I appreciate it very much, so I seek a motion for that.
I make a motion?
We have a motion for Ms. Durant. I need a second for that motion.
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Hemmerker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much again. The next two items were, in reference to the comment earlier about putting things on the agenda, were two items that board member Swanson asked that we revisit. We revisited them a few months ago. The first one is to request for the board to direct the administration to analyze student attrition for the past five years. And we had talked about, we had voted to table this the last time. My suggestion at this time, and we can discuss it, is I would seek a motion to do that again, because I'm not sure that now is the time to do that yet, and I'm not sure when it's gonna be, but that's just my feeling on it.
Well, we just had the superintendent spend who knows how many hours going through policies without a vote from the board to even do that, so it seems like this is a pretty important topic for us to be discussing.
Say that again, Gary.
Well, we never voted to ask the superintendent to go through these policies.
But one of our functions as a board, one of our functions as a board is to maintain policies.
True. So we just asked superintendent to do that, which had just been done in two thousand and nineteen. It seems like this is kind of a more important topic than needs to be, need to consideration than policies that didn't seem to have any significant changes needed.
Can I share? I, with the new law about school vouchers, I think we need some way as a district to keep track of who's, who's leaving. And I think the ten-day count that we have to submit to the state would be sufficient. And I want to understand though, too, that any one year, I think it's real unfair to judge one single issue, especially this coming year, because there's so much that's going to impact that. But the whole idea behind school vouchers is that we're going with the free market, impact public education, and for the free market to work, both sides, the supplier and the person demanding, needs to have knowledgeable information to make decisions, and if we don't have the idea about who's leaving and why, we can't make that decision, or we can't decide why, where we go forward.
And I think it's, we need to establish a baseline and then track it going forward. I mean, you can't, you can't use any data from one year, obviously.
My question is, what the, the, what the results of the data, what their, what the purpose of gathering the data is? Is it just to have a number to determine who's left? What, what is the rationale for the culling the data?
Well, what initially started was I learned there was about seven people from the transitioning eighth grade who left, which seemed like a high number to me, so I thought, well, maybe this is something we should track, so we have an understanding of how many people are leaving, why they're leaving? Are they leaving because of vouchers? Are they leaving because of, they want to go to a private school, are they leaving because they're moving? Without data, I don't know how the district can make decisions on-
I think it's important to see enrollment data by year. I think it's highly, I don't think we have any right to ask why someone leaves a district, or grade, or town, who's coming in, who's leaving. That's not anything that is, that is a family decision that people make on their own, and I think that that would be very disrespectful and very, that's a private decision. I do think, however, like Andrew said, coming up with this voucher program, I think it's important for us to have some enrollment data for the last few years. I would assume that that with the state is fairly easy to gather. I don't know why, we would want to know why, though. That's pretty private. I'm not comfortable with any of that data. But I am comfortable with the numbers, and I would think that's pretty easy to run occupancy. I mean, we need to have a plan. They're building 50 new houses down the road. So if we're going to see a shift in town occupancy, we're going to need to prepare that for school occupancy as well.
And that's where, you know, every year we get into the budget cycle, one of the first things that we look at is enrollment and enrollment projections because that does determine if there are going to be 50 houses, a certain number of those houses are going to have students coming in and can we fulfill their needs educationally? So...
What does it take to pull enrollment data district-wide for any given time? Is it, you know, something, Jason is way busy and I completely get it. You know, is that something that can be done in a 30-day window? Is that something that we can get from the state?
Well, certainly we have enrollment projections. I've provided them in your budget.
Right, I mean, the budget has, page one of the budget gives us enrollment projections.
But we can certainly provide you at any given time what students are registered here. I mean, certainly we have absolutely.
I don't want to know who's leaving. I don't think that's my business.
And we can say how many are registered by grade.
Yeah, I mean, people leave for a variety of different reasons. And no names should ever come out on that.
Oh, no, of course not.
Ever. I know there was, someone had data before and, no, that's private.
I think that in the, the one thing I, this town is such a transient town. We have a lot of apartments.
Right.
We have a lot of rental properties. And the one thing that you will notice over time, and you look at, if you look at the numbers and all the budget that you've sat through, you will see that it fluctuates, and it's because of the transient quality of this town.
I mean, maybe if the question is an enrollment number, maybe it is, it's looked at in December when the budget comes up for current enrollment, which is part of the budget process. And then maybe September 1st or whatever, October 1st, whenever that date is that we have to do, get the credit for how many students we have in the district, we look at that number.
October 1 is like the official enrollment that you...
There we go.
And the date that we have to report and then you know.
Okay.
And then it's based on that usually that we do a projection for what we think enrollment's going to be upcoming year, and then we build our budget based on that.
Right, I mean, two people could move like that and it would skew the numbers and just is what it is.
When you're looking at it, you're seeing, yeah, because there are absolutely seasonal trends for what enrollments.
And with the change in the eviction moratorium, I'm concerned about, you know, the rental, this town is very rental-heavy. And that could really skew our numbers as well.
They put another, they put the second moratorium for our county.
Okay.
And the other thing we can look at that's not difficult to do either is that certainly we did a projection for what we thought enrollments would be when we opened school this year. And then when school opens, we can say this is what we actually received, you know, you know, for kiddos. I know that we have many more kindergartners than we had anticipated in budget. So we've added, we've shifted a staff member down, so we have another kindergarten.
That's awesome. Now that you shifted some of the people that are coming in to want to be kindergarten.
And Sean thought, you know, when we were looking at those enrollment projections, that, you know, that maybe what we were looking at wasn't going to be indicative of what the numbers would look like because of COVID. So he was thinking that they might be higher because, you know, folks were not pre-registering or communicating because we were kind of in lockdown last year. So I think his hunch was correct, but we had no way of being able to forecast what that might be. So we went with what we, what historical trends were, you know.
So could you share that with us in October when you, and, you know, is there a way to get five years' worth of enrollment?
We have that. You have, you have October 1 enrollments for, I think, maybe a dozen years in your budget packet. But what it can do easily is, once we open school, we can look at how many students actually registered and how did that compare to what we had built, you know, the number we used to build our budget.
Or year-over-year, what does, you know, last week?
And then October 1, then we would look and then we'd be able to see trends over the course of the last, you know, next number of years.
Now, so you'd see the eighth grade trends.
I think if a member of the public...
The problem with that is we're not seeing, we're not understanding the reasoning behind the data. And I presume that when a student transfers, their, their school data goes to a different school, and that's probably handled by the guidance counselor. So the guidance counselor could aggregate that without providing a specific people to say, these people were going to private school because, maybe because they got the voucher program.
But why should everyone in the town know that information? That's private.
But they wouldn't. They would just...
But if they know that St. Thomas requested seven transfers, St. Michael's requested three, that's so private.
But I don't think I'd go into that kind of granularity. I think we could just say this number of people decided to transfer to a different school, maybe because they got credit vouchers. It might help us understand and project things a little more early than we would using kind of the aggregate, the bulk numbers. Because we could say, okay, some people left, but we don't know why they left.
Is it our, is it the public's business?
Is it the public's business to know specifically by a person left? No, of course not. Is it, is it our job to help?
Because if we know, everyone else knows. And I think that that's not fair. I don't think it's fair that...
And just because someone's information is sent to St. Thomas, Phillips, Exeter, this, thus, and so, doesn't mean there, there could be a new market come November, I mean, come September.
Absolutely. Yeah, of course.
So, I mean, I think, and I think, Gary, what you're talking about is sort of happening in the case of the kindergarten. It's not because they're going to different schools, but it has come to the attention of the school through registering that we're going to have more kindergartners. So Sean and Susan have worked together to fill that void and appropriately staff for that new paradigm. That's happening. We just may not, it's probably happening on a daily basis with the organizational, operational things moving around.
So that's...
I mean, clearly, no one else on the board is interested in it, so.
I mean, I don't think there's a reason to table it. I can just remove my request.
I...
Or mine.
I like the data. I don't want to know the reason why.
And I think, I think we've determined that the data is not cumbersome to achieve and that we could get it and have it and realize that we use that data to shape decisions moving forward.
I, I, so I, I think, like, if a child is transferring through being wholly forced to...
Right.
I think the administration should know.
But I think I'm here, I would have that conversation.
I'm wondering, though, if we're perhaps trying to create a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. So maybe we get the data, and then come October or November, when we get this, we look at if there is a problem we need to run the solution for.
And to me, it's more than gathering data so we can foresee problems earlier. But different interpretation.
So, so are we hearing that we'll modify the data as we've discussed here and then we'll remove this request?
Sure.
Will, by October 1st?
Or whenever, the first meeting after October 1st, when we have the most up-to-date current enrollment data, you'll just provide it to us, and then we'll get it again in December with the budget. All right, the next one is the request for the cultural, annual culture and climate survey. We've discussed this one before, too.
I think we discussed this numerous times.
We discussed it. We had tabled it before.
If I may be so bold, maybe we can ask the Culture and Climate Committee to look at the DOE Culture and Climate Survey and see if it's something we want to implement in Newmarket.
I think that's good. I think that's very good.
I think that's a great idea.
So, Gary, if I'm hearing you, we're going to request that Susan work with the Culture and Climate Committee and, you know, have them add to their list to review that to determine if that or something like it would be good for the district.
And I, I don't think it needs to be done soon. I mean, I think it's, you know.
Okay.
If we're not on a time crunch or anything.
Okay.
Certainly don't want to push it any further.
All right. The next thing is the, the vote for the renewal of Superintendent Givens' contract. We've discussed some things. We've heard some things. And, you know, I think the best thing probably would be to get a motion on the table and then discuss it from there. So I seek a motion to renew Superintendent Givens' contract.
So moved.
I second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Ms. Durant. We'll move to discuss.
Given that we've heard, apparently there's a survey out there we don't know about, or I haven't seen anyways.
None of us have.
Okay, none of us have. And that we haven't even, as a board, gotten together to review the evaluation. It seems to me that we should table this until we have a chance to discuss it in a non-public session.
I don't want to waste time going over the evaluation if we don't have all the votes. I'm not going to waste her time. I'm not going to waste my time. So I say we vote, and then we can discuss the evaluation because there's several things we need to discuss, right?
There are definitely, aside from the evaluation, there are some compensation pieces that we need to discuss. And, and just so that everyone on the board and the public understands, the vote today is to determine whether or not we're going to enter into a process of negotiations to get a contract moving forward. That's a process that's not going to end today or tonight or within the next month, I would think, because it doesn't have to. So that's sort of the process.
But that means we're going into negotiations in good faith that we're seeking to renew when we haven't necessarily all discussed the evaluation together. Or as soon as they haven't necessarily, we haven't.
No, we haven't, but you have all seen it. You all submitted information to it. I built it based upon the guidelines from the evaluation.
Which, again, was a tool we never voted on, and we didn't discuss. It seems like when you have a board that can get together and discuss things, we can kind of go back and forth and form collective agreement rather than submitting things to one person and having them go through and say, hey, board this and won that and... I'm just not comfortable with it.
I, I seek the board's purview. We could go into non-public session after this meeting tonight. It's up to you guys.
I, I'm fine with doing a vote to enter into negotiations. I have a couple of things that I want to say. I just want to take a moment and tell the board why I'm voting tonight. I've been sitting on this board for five months. I wasn't on the board during the superintendent transition, the non-renewal of our previous principal, or the decisions made around the COVID reopening and remote learning. However, I have tracked the data on our graduation rates, test scores, and the overall teacher and student experience. I've been active in this town since my son was in first grade, not just when the previous principal left, okay? I've put myself out there for all of you, and I want to make sure that your kids all get a fair shake. Sitting with these adults right here, it's not easy. We are members of your community. We have kids, we have friends, family here, and we have wants for our kids and the educational system, just like you do. I'm going to push this school as hard as I can. I want you to know that I'm going to challenge the workforce to find ways to get through to modern-day kids. And I'm going to support and reward teachers who support 21st century models of education. You know what that's going to take. Every person who is angry with Dr. Givens right now, there's another one who calls us and can't thank her enough. Dr. Givens applied to this town for a reason, and that was to put Newmarket on the educational map. She was very honest about what it was going to take to move this needle, what it would take to make a Newmarket student as good as any other rich town. And if you didn't grow up in this area, you don't know what I'm talking about. Newmarket has had a reputation its entire life, and we finally have a woman who is going to fix this. Everyone said yes. Everyone was on board. And she told us it was going to be hard, that we were going to uncover things. Everyone said yes. They were willing to push for accreditation and a strong diploma. And then the shoe dropped. No one expected this kind of turmoil. I certainly did. Nobody on this board did. No one thought in a million years that we were going to lose some of the teachers that we did. I can't explain it. I can't apologize for it. I wasn't on the board. But we do not quit. Our kids deserve to be heard. We add the classes that the students are asking for. We add the teachers that want to challenge students' minds, not just coast them by. And we hold our educators accountable for their actions, and we start to build a top-notch district. You know, COVID, keeping Newmarket kids in school was nothing less than a miracle. Gathering 80 community members to hash out the reopening is nothing less than a miracle. The fact that we're actually revamping the curriculum and have our foot on the gas for accreditation while all other schools are just trying to survive is nothing less than a miracle. We cannot stop going forward. I care about your kids, every single one of them. I know them. They've been in my home. I will work with her. I'm reviewing her goals for the next 12 months, one of which is repairing relationships. And I think we've got some good stuff coming down the pike. I really do. I'm going to hold her accountable. But what I'm not going to do is beat her down over this renewal. I'm letting the Mazzoni decision go. I'm focusing on the future, and I plan to vote yes on her renewal, and I want everyone to know that.
Can I ask what goals you're talking about? We haven't...
The one goal. It was one goal.
I'm going to work with her on her goals. Don't you want to help come up with some goals, Gary?
Well, of course I do, but...
Yes, we do.
Can I finish speaking, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Normally, we do that either at a retreat or during a meeting. It sounds like you're already doing that.
No, but I'm going to work on it. I'm going to work on it, Gary. I am. I believe in her. I do. I think she's the right person. We have gotten rid of eight superintendents. We've got our foot on the gas for accreditation, curriculum. I know the Mazzoni thing is awful. It's awful. But we've got to move forward. She's our shot. Everyone believed in her. There's no change. I'm sorry.
No, it's just upsetting to me that I can't respond to you because we're not in non-public and for this board not to have a non-public discussion before taking this vote and then not to, taking the opportunity to listen to the staff, which apparently have surveys out there, it's very upsetting to me.
But if Culture and Climate is going to look at a survey, what, what survey is that? I mean, we have over 200 people in our district, and I mean no disrespect to every single person that works in this district. You all matter. Your voice matters. It does.
That's not really what we're telling them.
But do we have, are we going to sit down with 200?
I don't know what surveys are out there.
I don't either.
And I, and I think we have to, I mean, and, and the board can decide now whether we want to go into a non-public session or not to discuss this.
I make a motion to go into a non-public session.
I'll second.
We'll go into a non-public session under, we're skipping parts of our meeting, under RSA 91A3, A32A. I believe we're all, we have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Mr. Hammacher. Mr. Swanson?
Aye.
Ms. McKenney?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Aye.
Will you be returning to public session?
We will.
I'm sorry.
Yes, because we haven't finished our business. All right, so we are in a non-public session at nine.
I will be voting in favor of Dr. Gibbons' contract. I, as on the board, one thing I've learned that even though I've done everything in education from teaching to shepherding dances to being Catholic monitor, that being on the board is probably the worst part of public education. It is miserable. I have had sleepless nights. It's just, Gary and Elizabeth and Kim, I respect you guys so much for being on here longer than I have because I have not... It's not easy. I want you to know that the reason I'm voting in favor of Dr. Gibbons' contract is not because I think that it's entirely perfect and that there's not things that we need to improve. I have seen Dr... I have sat down with Dr. Gibbons a number of times and the thing that I've enjoyed the most about it is that I've gotten to know her that I can get behind and I apologize for lack of the better word, a show. And there is someone here that entirely cares about every single kid in this district and cares about every single thing that happens in education. And as a parent, that's what I want. Everything that was voiced today and the emails you've read, I read. I know everyone here takes them to heart and I feel that there's an area here that we can move forward and grow. My biggest fear is we go back in and dive into the superintendent search, what are we going to get? Like, I... Right now Concord is on the third interim superintendent. And I can tell you that I've been through numerous superintendent changes. I've been over through numerous superintents. I had one that had an affair with her secretary and embezzled from the district. Like, I've been under the superintendent that had... was one of the best in the nation. So I, looking at this and going forward, I see we could be something really, really awesome in this district. And I will tell you that I will do everything I can to make sure that all sides come together and we repair these rifts because New Market, someone that's been here six years, is an awesome, awesome community. I just really hope we can get beyond this. I know that I am willing to do everything I can to repair those rifts and I believe everyone else in this district can. I don't think we can do this by creating new ones. So for that reason, I strongly believe that my kids can get the best education through Dr. Gibbons' leadership and then everything else we can solve later on. So I want you guys to know that I do take everything to heart, but I do want to keep what's always in mind, it's best for the students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else?
So, three years ago, I didn't listen to my staff. I didn't understand everything that was happening and I had to live with that. And I'm not going to do that again. I'm going to listen to my staff and I'm going to listen to the kids and the kids that have said things to me. I am voting to renew your contract because I appreciate what you've done for us the past three years, two years, going on day.
Just, I'm going to be brief in my comments because you guys have expressed a lot of what I would say, but I am also going to be voting in favor of Dr. Gibbons and renewing her contract. For a couple of reasons. From the second that I met her on the third floor of this building, when she was coming for her first interview and she was reading the town in a report to learn something about our community, I felt like she might be the right one for us. And then I have not changed that opinion. Yes, we've had tough roads. Yes, we have hurt feelings. And I think that it's important that we acknowledge that and work together, starting with the six of us here and through the town, to repair those relationships. Because one of the things that I appreciate most about Dr. Gibbons is her values-driven leadership and her care for every student in the district. Regardless if it's number one in the class or number 100 in the class. And the desire that she and I share is that each of those 100 kids or whatever number it is leave here equipped to be the best whatever it is they're going to be that they could possibly be. With the confidence and knowing that they have a supportive community behind them, equipped to do anything that comes. And my sincere belief is that Dr. Gibbons can lead us to that. So, anything else?
I feel like I have a spotlight on me now. I would just say that despite what people think, I'm going to vote based on what I think is best for the kids.
All right, so we will move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition?
Nay.
Nay. Four to one vote. We will go from there. Susan, I look forward to working with you for at least the next seven months till the next election comes. And, you know, we've had some trying times. I think Andrew hit it on the head when, you know, be it masks in schools or COVID or bullying or food insecurity or all the things that our students deal with. We care about each of those kids. You know, some of them I know, directly some of them I don't know. Most of them I don't. But the things that I want for my child are what I want for everyone else's child. And we are going to work collaboratively to allow that to happen. So, moving on.
And I think that's the sad part, like, we get to see things.
Yes.
That you can't talk about in public. And I will tell you, the graduation this year, I saw things that I was very pleased with. I, first of all, you pulled off a graduation during global pandemic too.
Twice.
Twice. And I just, it was the kids. Was every child happy? No. Because you know what? Sometimes we don't get our way and that makes us mad. But everybody put their big panties on and off we went and had a great graduation. It was beautiful. And there was one child there that didn't know if he was going to have a diploma in his folder. And I got to hear the conversation and it was so heartwarming and knowing that people care enough for all the kids in the district. That this child was able to graduate because people helped him during a global pandemic and just, we don't know the other trials that he had gone through, but it was a very beautiful moment. So, thank you for that.
All right. Yes. I mean, you know, the fact that we had students in school in person as many days as we did last year is an amazing feat. Every week I kept thinking, please, don't let anything happen. I don't want anyone to get sick. I'm scared. But we made it through. Again, it was not perfect because the world is not perfect right now, but we did pretty darn good. And I'm proud of us for that. And I think it's taken everyone in the community to make that happen in whatever role that they have. So, I'm going to stop, but that's sort of what I feel.
And I would like to... I'm sorry to interrupt here. I want to point out here too that there is a kind of misconception that everyone agrees or that everyone's voting. And that's absolutely not the case. I went to Dr. Gibbons with the issue of going after school and we together and we disagreed. But the thing was though, we came together and that, you know, she listened to other parents and she found a solution. And that was within the last, you know, three months. And obviously the solution, the public will see here this week, but I don't want you to think that everything's perfect because it's not. And there's... I feel like we have a person that we can move forward with. And I know that there's problems with morale and things like that, but that's things we can move forward. I can tell you as a teacher that that is something I have dealt with before, but as a community, as an SAU, we can move forward and solve that. So...
All right. Susan, do you want to say anything?
So, thank you very much. Thank you to all that showed up here tonight. I certainly appreciate the vote of confidence and support from the board. It has been a very challenging year for all of us. You know, I never thought for one minute when I accepted the position that I would be faced with the challenges that I was faced with. And yet, in spite of all of it, I still, in my heart, believe that New Market could have a world-class school district. And it has all the markers for success if the community will embrace it and we work together towards achieving that audacious goal. I feel, as I said to my staff on the last day of school, you know, each and every time I think we have a victory, I do a little dance and I have a little plastic microphone and I walk out of my office, do a little dance and I drop it because I know it's one step closer to being able to meet the needs of each and every child that walk through our doors. It is my vision that not only every staff member, but every student will wake up each and every day and be so excited that they just run to school. School should be a place where kids learn and their curiosities are explored. It should be a place of joy. Learning is fun. And I know that the staff that are sitting here today and many more of us have every intention of making that dream come true for the children here in New Market. And I thank you for the opportunity to continue to lead you in this journey.
All right. Susan, do we have the wage scale?
I don't know.
I don't think we do.
I was looking through my packet and I didn't see it.
All right.
So, we'll count it to the next...
Okay. My guess the question to the board is, do we want to go back into non-public to continue the discussion from before or what shall we do? The sooner the better, but we have a little time. We could do a non-public at the... We have time for that, the this-year piece. I'll pers...
Let me just follow on that.
I was going to say...
I'd like to wait.
Okay. Well, I wasn't going to lead us that way, but I'm fine with that. So, I seek a motion at 9:24 to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Miss McKinney, Mr. Swanson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned and we will add a non-public to the next to bring that up again.